So calling the meeting to order and Rosie, if you want to go ahead and do attendance and then while we do that, if you can start, members can please review the meetings, the minutes from last meeting on Tuesday, and we'll get those approved as soon as she's done. Thanks.
Sure. Ryan Fisher.
Here.
Jason Tamara.
Here.
Angel Lopez.
Here.
Esther Acosta.
Here.
Patricia Solorio.
Here.
Angie Bolden. I know she's here. I see her. There she is. Robert Doyle.
Here.
Ivan Teniente.
Here.
Jennifer Camacho Tiburcio. Tim Seifert.
Here, here, I'm here.
I see him. Jose Aguilar Galavan.
Here.
Ronald Jacobs.
Here.
Rosalie Marquez. I don't see Rosalie. Okay. Isaac Biruman.
Here.
Great. I think we are only missing Rosalie. We're hoping she's, she'll pop in soon.
Okay, we'll keep our eyes out for her. And then in the meantime, I will make a motion to approve Tuesday's minutes.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
And all in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Wonderful.
And then with that, it's all yours, Rosie.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you, committee members, and thank you to those who are in this meeting to listen in on the deliberations. We appreciate your, your participation and we hope that you find it insightful. Uh, I think we still see a square on part of the PowerPoint. Is it just in my computer or is it others?
Nope, and it's down in the bottom and longer now.
Okay.
Good. Is that better or?
Yeah, that's better. As long as it's not preventing, I mean, it's not preventing me from seeing it. Is it preventing anybody else from seeing what's on the screen?
No.
No.
Okay.
I think it was, I think it was just because I had my participant list up to that. I think maybe that was blocking it.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, moving on. As you heard at the beginning of this meeting, this meeting is being recorded. And just a little, a few things that I'd like to share before we proceed. The block grants advisory committee has already had an opportunity to hear from applicants during individual site visits and during the February 15th block grants advisory committee meeting. Attendees will remain muted at all times during the deliberations period. This meeting allows applicants to observe the process only. Tonight's deliberations will be for both public service and capital applications. And then the final approval of the proposed allocations will take place at the city council public, city, at, at a city council public hearing on Tuesday, April 5th at 5:30. Next slide, please. Once again, just to go over this year's funding priorities, the priorities include to prevent homelessness, address critical need, assist at rescue the elderly and underserved populations, expand educational development opportunities, provide affordable housing, and revitalize existing neighborhoods. And just to note that these priorities are not listed in order of importance. They are numbered for referencing purpose, purposes only. But priorities one and two will be the ones considered for CDPG public service funding tonight. So on your screen, you're looking at an estimated available funding for this coming year. We have not received our actual allocation from HUD. But we are anticipating receiving about the same as we did last year. And if that's the case, this is what it looks like. It'll look like we'll have about 244,000 set aside for public services and a little under 1.1 million for capital projects. Next slide, please. Here is a summary of your, of, of, of the public service applications. We received a total of 21 CDPG public service applications and the total asked was over $410,000. But as we just mentioned, we're anticipating only having about $244,000. Now out of that, 37,500, 37,500 is set aside for the city council because each city council member has an opportunity to allocate $7,500 towards an agency that it, that the committee, that council member feels needs to receive the funding. And that will take place at the April 5th meeting. So for tonight, the block grants advisory committee will allocate $207,175 towards public services tonight. For capital, we received five CDPG capital applications totaling over 1.6 million. And we estimate, as we mentioned, having a little under 1.1 million. Next slide. And just a reminder, at the October 5th city council meeting, the capital project applications were prioritized by the city council in this order. They gave the city of Santa Maria's Public Works Department's pedestrian safety improvement project the high priority. They gave a medium priority to communify Capslow and Good Samaritan. And they gave a low priority to the city of Santa Maria's Recreation Parks Department Park Rehabilitation Project. Next slide, please. So at this time, committee members should share if there is an applicant that may be an application or an applicant that may be considered a conflict of interest. I know at Tuesday's meeting, Ron had mentioned that he just wanted to make sure that he didn't have a conflict of interest with an organization that he used to volunteer with. We checked with our city attorney and he does not have a conflict of interest. So it does not appear that we have any other committee members that have a conflict of interest. But for the sake of our documentation, is there a committee member who feels he or she has a conflict of interest that would prevent them from participating in tonight's meeting? Okay, great. Moving on. So we're going to start off with public services. So that we did, we did this last year and it seemed to have worked really well. We will provide all of our committee members with a Survey Monkey link via email, so which we will send out to you shortly. It has the names of all the 21 agencies that applied for funding for public services funding. This is not capital. This is just public services. You'll take 10 minutes to rank them from one to 21, with one being the highest and 21 being the lowest. This activity will serve as the committee's jumping off point to see where collectively the committee stands on which agencies appear to be deemed as a higher priority collectively by the entire committee. The results of the survey will be shared. This does not mean that an agency ranked one will automatically get funded or that an agency ranked 21 does not stand a chance. This is just to help the committee see where everyone else stands. Do we have any questions before we send out that link to all of you?
Hi, Rosalie's here. I had the wrong date.
Great. Thank you, Rosalie. I'm glad you are here. Do you have any questions before we proceed, Rosalie?
So my understanding, we're going to do with the Survey Monkey like we did last time?
Correct.
Okay, no problem.
I will be sending that link in the next couple of seconds.
Okay. Rosie, will you be emailing it or will you be dropping it into the chat?
I emailed it, but you know, um, we can drop it into the chat. What do you think, Alicia? Or maybe, actually, I think for privacy, sorry, go ahead, Alicia.
Yeah, I was just gonna see if you drop it in the chat, then everyone would have access to it.
Yeah, for privacy purposes, we're just gonna email it to you all. But if you want us to put it in the chat to you specifically, we can do that. We can send it to you specifically. Okay, I got that.
Well, I already got it just for every, in case anybody else got it.
Thank you. We just got it.
I also got an email.
All right. So at this time, I guess we just take 10 minutes and we'll come back. If you need extra time, that'll, I think we can accommodate that. If need be, just let us know in 10 minutes when we reconvene. But in the meantime, we'll just go ahead and do our survey.
Did everyone get it? Should I start the timer?
No, I haven't gotten it.
Bob, I'll send it to you in the chat.
Thanks.
Yeah, I haven't gotten it. Okay.
Bob, I just sent it to you directly in the chat. Hopefully that helps.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I've got it now. Thank you.
Great. If anybody else needs me to do that, I'm happy to do that.
Should I go ahead and start the timer?
I think so. Thank you, Alicia.
No, it's not letting me. Let me try. Let's 5:45 right now. So.
My thing's not working for me. I don't know. I'm having problems.
Would it help if we resent it to you, Tim? Or is it, there is also an ability for you to drag, you can drag instead of putting numbers, you can drag them.
Yeah, I think it did something wrong because it, every time I throw one out, the next one behind it goes away.
Is it because you're, so if you put in like two number ones, it'll, one of them will go away?
Gotcha. Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, it won't let you put the same number in twice.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
And I think I fixed the YouTube video, so let me try again. There it goes.
Wonderful. Okay, so now Mark Vandykamp is going to send us the results and then we will put it in that spreadsheet, that public services spreadsheet that we sent out. We sent you all a public services spreadsheet a while back, but we will now put it in that spreadsheet as it's showing in the survey. Thank you for your patience. We are still working on the numbers and we will get back to you shortly. Give us, give us about five minutes, um, please, and I'm pretty sure we'll, we'll have it all down in five.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. It should just be a couple more minutes and we'll have those results. Thank you for your patience. Okay, we are back. Thank you so much for your patience. We just wanted to quadruple check everything. In a few seconds.
Do you want me to screen share the spreadsheet?
Yeah, I was gonna say in a few seconds, we're gonna screen share the, the spreadsheet here.
And just let me know if the, the font is too small or we'll try.
Maybe a little bigger.
We try and hide these. Full screen mode. Try and zoom in a little bit more. Kind of hard to get everything on there. That's still too small.
I can see it, but it's, it's, I mean, I have a big screen, so I'm, I'm not. And if it helps you, if you would, if you would like, I can feed them from highest to lowest, if that, if that's something that somebody needs me to do.
I see, you, you did have it a little bit bigger than it is now, so if you, if you can get back to that, that would be fantastic. There you go.
A little bigger.
It just cuts, it just cuts the, I can go by sections, but it just cuts the bottom part off. So here's one, I'll just through, I'll do one through 15 there.
Yeah.
Then let me know if you'd like.
Is there any way you could share it? Can you email it to, to us?
Um, yeah.
It'd be good, then we can check it out.
Um, Rosie or, or Tash or do one of you guys share it?
Sure, I couldn't do that, yeah.
Thank you, Tash. I also, before we proceed, I do want, I was getting, it took a little longer because I was getting the actual numbers from um, Mark who helped us with the Survey Monkey. There's a couple of agencies that are tied as far as the amounts of, of votes that were tabulated. So Good Samaritan Shelter, homeless shelter programs, and the Salvation Army Hot Lunch Program, so number, rank, ranking numbers five and six, those received 13.29 votes. Um, or, I, I mean, not votes, but like that's how Survey Monkey tabulates it and gives a ranking and it gives, it, it, it it just gives you a number associated with it, and the higher the number, the higher the ranking, the lower the number, the lower the ranking, and so it, it came, it, both of them have the same number, so I just wanted to put that out there. This is how it was generated, but they both have the same number. And then also toward the end, there were two other ones that had the same number, Fighting Back, Santa Maria Valley and Partners in Housing, which I believe are numbers 14 and 15. So just wanted to let you both know, and let you all know that those, those agencies were, um, received the same amount of votes collectively.
Thank you. Can we, um, so going off of this then, can we start applying the team recommendations up to the point we exhaust our allocation of 207175, so we can see where we stand with respect to, just if we were to fund the top, however many we can get through, that'll be a good starting, like, starting point from here.
Yes, I can go ahead and start doing that.
Thanks.
So that one, um, independent living would only be 7,000, so uh, we need 15,000 in order to um, meet the minimum. The amount remaining is up in the, right.
So then can you, so ILRC, they're the last one on the list before we run out of money. Um, so you can
Yeah, so I'll just put the 7,000, but it should, it needs to be at least 15, or do you want me just to remove it?
You can remove it completely.
Okay.
Um, and then and so what does that leaves us with, the 7,000 surplus?
Um, yes, 7,000 extra.
Sorry, since I'm new to this, can I ask, why does it need to be a minimum of 15?
Because it's not economical to fund an agency, uh, the, the time and effort that it goes into administering the grant makes it uneconomical when we get below 15,000. And in fact, 15,000 is kinda on the line as it is. Uh, we've been asked by HUD several times to try to trim back the number of grants, the, uh, of recipients. And so, um, these, these amounts have kind of increased over the years to help meet those requests from HUD. But Rosie can probably elaborate further if, if need be.
That was, that was well said, Ryan. It's, it's, it costs, HUD, HUD had a study out a few years ago that said that it costs anywhere between $8,000 to $10,000 just to manage a, a CDBG grant. Um, so it, it was not cost effective to provide agencies with anything less than 15.
So, um, based on this, then I'm gonna just make a motion to approve these as our, as our, uh, recommendation and we'll vote on it, and if not, then we can discuss further, but, uh, you know, I think we've all had time to review uh, the Zoom grants and applications, and we've met with the agencies. Um, I'll just make a preliminary motion to accept these as our grant amounts, and then city council can add that 7175 in with theirs, with their, uh, amounts that they have.
Well, I think we just had some discussion before. We vote. What I'm looking for is how many we did last year. I'm trying to find that page that just says the five year.
Last, last year we funded, well, the, and, and keep in mind that this is, keep in mind that this is including the amount of, of, of agencies that the and keep in mind that this is, keep in mind that this is including the amount of, of, of agencies that the council added. But last year we funded a total of fourteen.
Okay, that, that answers my question. Okay, go ahead.
Actually, I apologize. I believe it, I believe one of them, actually, we took out, we canceled, so it's thirteen. Let me double check.
Well, it's very close to where we are.
Yes, thirteen.
Rosie, well, I, I second Ryan's motion.
Thanks, Jose.
And before we do that, is how we, what are we having the two thousand and seven right now? One number thirteen, fourteen?
That's eleven agencies, which is, yeah, which is right in line with what HUD is kind of trying to get us down to. Which is why I'm, you know, plus we still have city council that's gonna throw in their money to whatever other remaining agencies we don't make recommendations for. So that's why I'm, I'm making the motion to, that we vote to accept it like this.
So that can bring a couple more that we don't choose, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Let's just take a look a little bit, okay? Is that okay with you?
Fine.
So these that's on our screen, it's on fourteen, so these are the ones that we're gonna recommend. Did I have them looking at right now?
Well, that's what we're discussing right now, Angie. So I made the motion that we vote to accept these as the, what our recommendations could be to city council. But, you know, it still needs to be voted on and, and can be discussed, or whatever you guys want to do.
I second the motion.
So do we vote then, or? If there's a second?
Yeah, can we get a vote then, Rosie? Like a roll call vote?
Sure, but before we move on, I just want to clarify. So the committee was making the recommendation and leaving that seventy-one hundred dollar, seven, seven thousand one hundred and seventy-five on the table, or, or what, does it want to allocate that to the eleven existing agencies that are being recommended?
Well, I mean, if we have the seventy-one hundred, I would make a motion that for the, for example, the North County Rate Crisis and Child Protection Center who requested eighteen thousand, we recommended fifteen. Could we move that additional three, or an additional three in there?
I agree with that. And I'd like to put the rest of it to, to one of the two agencies, whether it's the hot lunch.
I agree with that, too.
Yeah, I like, I like that idea.
And, uh,
I agree with the hot lunch.
Go Salvation Army, I, I vote for that.
Yeah, because they've requested the twenty, so that would, that would clean that up neatly.
I agree with Good Samaritan, I would say.
Yes.
Perfect, thanks so much.
Based on the change, I'd like to make a motion to accept it as it is at this point. This is Ron.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Is anyone, is anyone opposed?
By making a motion, Ryan, what is that, what are you doing? Are you already done with this? By making a motion, or is there no discussion on it?
That's what we're voting on, Isaac. So we've, the motion's been made. And so you can, if you agree to accept this, you say, you can agree, and if not, let us know. We're happy to hear if you don't. And this seems like a pretty clean, well-settled kind of review of the, the agencies. I know we didn't get into a lot of discussion about it, but we've had several hours of discussion and review of applications. Like I said, I'm happy to hear anything anyone has to add. But the motion's been made, and I, I don't know where we are with the vote, but Rosie will probably need to get a, a count. But I didn't hear any, anyone opposed to that motion.
Sure, sounded like much.
I think you're correct, yeah. I think you're correct. We've had enough time to review and, and listen to the agencies, which did, they did a great job. So I'm, I'm confident in moving this forward.
Guys, good, Rosie? Alicia?
Do we have any abstentions? Or any, any opposed? Okay, it sounds like the majority say ayes, and I don't have any, anybody saying no or abstaining, unless you'd like to go on the record as such.
I'm just sad that the, uh, the North San Aravide County United Way, the homeless shelter, but that's okay. That's the way it goes.
Yeah, I'm, I, community partners have been caring for me, Rosie, so.
Yeah, there's always, there's always those agencies that, you know, and, and programs that we can't help. But the good thing is, you know, the city council has their allocation that they can potentially fund. So they have that going for them. So it's not necessarily an end-all with us.
Correct.
Okay, I, I mean, we had a, a motion and a second, and we put it to a vote. We can proceed with capital if everyone is ready to move on.
Yes, please.
All right, thank you. We've done public service. Now moving on to capital.
I'm just trying to transition it.
Oh, yeah, sure, no problem. And, and, and while Alicia does that, I do have to give Alicia and Tash a big shout out. They really have put all of this together, all the PowerPoints and the spreadsheets and just got everything ready for all of the committee members and definitely made life easy for me. So they've worked really hard in getting all of this ready for tonight. So a big shout out to both of them. They've worked really hard on, on this.
I agree.
As they do every day.
They do a good job.
Do a great job, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring up the PowerPoint, just in case you wanted to go over how, how the capital projects will go.
Yes, thank you, Alicia. That's a great idea. So tonight, we're going to have a series of votes. The first one, and we left it here, just in case, even though we know we don't have to segment like we've had to do in the past, but we left the segmented CDBG Public Service Activities vote here. Just in case we did have to take a committee member out because they had a conflict of interest. Obviously, we don't have one to, uh, tonight, but we left it in there. That one, we obviously don't need to do tonight. We just finished making our recommendations for CDBG Public Services Program. Next up is going to be CDBG Capital. And then following that, we're going, well, the committee is going to approve that five percent delivery cost that is attached to all of the capital projects. And then the committee will decide on the TBRA administration set aside, as well as our required fair housing set aside. And then lastly, the committee will vote on contingencies. Now, because as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we don't have our final number from HUD as far as how much we have. They could surprise us and say, hey, we're gonna give you an extra five hundred thousand dollars this year. And then we're gonna, instead of having to come back and redo everything again, um, we adopt contingencies. So that way, if we get more money, then we already have a plan in place as to how we're going to use that money. And if we get less money, which I don't even want to put it out there because we're not getting any less money from HUD, but if, if we did, then we also adopted contingency. You know, maybe having a plan prepared in case we get less. And then, of course, we also adopt contingencies if the committee feels there need to be contingencies on any public services or capital projects, if they want specific things or activities done with that money. So once in a while, the committee will say, I want to make sure that all of these dollars go to only this, this, and this that is part of that program. And if that's the case, then we adopt contingencies. But that is what the process looks like tonight. Any questions?
This is Ron, just a quick request, and that is in preparation of possible contingencies, in case there is additional funds, can we get the final one through twenty-one list sent to us so that way we could take a look at it?
Sure, sure. So we can definitely do that. So the one that was just adopted, we can, maybe, maybe if Tash can do that, she just sent you all earlier, the, the, the ranked, the ranking one, but not, not with the actual amounts. So if that's something that Tash is able to do, that would be wonderful.
Yes, I will send that out in just a minute.
Thank you so much. Okay, so can you all see the spreadsheet? And, and I should preface this by saying there's five applications. Now, the sixth one that you see at the very bottom, that bottom row, TBRA, that was not a submitted application. That's just money set aside on an annual basis that comes out of capital to pay for the administrative costs of running our tenant-based rental assistance program. Now, our rental assistance program is covered by home funding, but because we're not an entitlement of home funding, we're part of a consortium, we don't get the administration dollars that come with that funding. So we have to figure out a way to cover our costs. And so we're allowed to use CDBG capital in order to do so. But fifteen thousand dollars goes a long way because it allows us to serve well over a hundred households a year in providing them their rental deposit. So with that, Ryan and committee, I will let you take it away.
So there's no Survey Monkey for this one, but I see that our, and I'm just verify with me that the the team recommendations are not much more than the amount, right? So it's just a matter of pretty much eliminating a small amount of money. And then the majority of these potentially could be funded, but I don't know, if anybody has, I, obviously, the city's gonna fund the pedestrian safety and accessibility improvement projects, so we might as well just fill that in with their amount, because.
And it's Tim, I mean, it seems like Pearlman Park is the least of the priorities. Why not yank it from there and see where we're at?
Yeah, absolutely. So go ahead and, Rosie or Alicia or, or Tash, whoever's handling it, if you can basically fill those in as as Tim suggested, and eliminate Pearlman Park, and basically put in everything else, and we'll see where we stand.
Actually, I'm just gonna use council recommendation, and then I'll update the spreadsheet.
That's perfect. That'll be perfect.
Last year it was just council, so we'll do that. Okay, so it was allocate the five hundred thousand to the ADA.
Yes, yes.
So the recommendation was to basically put down the team recommendations for two through six, but not one. One would not be funded at this time. Is that correct, Ryan? Is that what I heard?
That's absolutely perfect. Thanks.
Okay. So that's nine hundred and eighteen thousand.
If you want to add, if you want to add TBRA as well.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
And then why don't we go ahead and bump up comm unified with the remaining balance, since they requested seventy-five? Or whatever gets us to the ten ninety-eight?
Roughly about a hundred and twenty-four thousand.
I don't, that's.
So that was to add the one hundred and twenty-five thousand where?
Oh, it looks like you already did, so.
No, put it, for the, the part of, if you put in one twenty-four oh ninety.
We're not gonna fund Pearlman Park because the, the complications involved with a phased project and the city has, the city council's indicated it's not a priority. So I guess that leaves us with a balance. How much balance?
It's all, um.
It's a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Rosie, last year, we, we, we were able to go to the Boys and Girls Club and, and ask if they needed more money for their outdoor, outdoor basketball courts. Is, can we, can we go to the Good Sam and see if they need more for their, for their kitchen?
Yes.
I would, I would second that as a good idea.
I think it's a good idea.
Simply because the cost of product right now.
Well, keep in mind, exponentially. So keep in mind for that one, the HUD regulations for kitchen equipment are cumbersome for the Good Samaritan to, basically, anything they buy has to be essentially permanently affixed appliances and stuff. So that might, that might be hard on them. It might be something we approach them with and ask, but, and I'm fine giving them that if, if they can meet those requirements. I just don't want them to get in a situation where they're buying stuff that doesn't qualify for HUD equipment. And then, because we've promised them all this money, and then they, you know, HUD says, oh, we can't reimburse for that.
Oh, this is Ron again. So I got a question on that, and that is, could we, since I'm new to this, would, could we make that part of the contingency?
My understanding, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, we went to the site, does it, were there specs developed based on that?
No, I, um, I'm concerned that they're gonna be way over the amount they asked for. They did not have a, they have somebody helping them, but I brought up things that I just thought should be in the bid. One was fire suppression, because, you know, you have to have that, and they had no hoods. And all stoves have to have hoods, but where they were gonna put them, you know, they have to have a plan, the actual plan of where they're gonna put them. And they, they didn't really show us anything. And they may use the old ones, but it is really old. So I'm sure they can use the money, but we don't want to give the hundred and twenty-five to the park. So we're definitely not gonna do that. Because Dennis, was Dennis handling that one? Didn't he say they would take?
Yes, he did.
Yeah.
Weird thing. I mean, with, with the, the, the properties for sale and that, it, it seems like we should wait.
But that property's not for sale, that we're, what they're talking about.
But the corner is, on the.
But I understand it's been sold.
And it.
I don't believe that it has.
It hasn't?
I don't think so.
If it is, it's, it happened today, and I, because it would.
No, no.
I guess, but.
Yeah, I, I just heard that the Union Plaza was trying to buy it.
So kind of coming back to the Good Sam, I, I'd love to um Bob, especially if you think that they didn't ask for enough money for what they need to add, you know, that it's critical. You know, for lots of different reasons that they upgrade that kitchen. It's, it's really old and it helps save all kinds of money on, on other fronts. And if we could um just pose the question to see where they're at on developing those specs, I think that would be a good investment.
How about this? How about if we make a contingency to fund whatever it is they come up with? Because they're gonna have to bid this out. They're gonna have to get the restaurant equipment, the installation. There's a lot of costs involved, so.
Yeah, yeah. And they put 95,000 in further.
Hang on, wait, one sec. And then with the remainder, that can go to the ADA to the, to the ADA, because I know, Bob, that that 500,000, that's just a drop in the bucket for the, for the requirements. Go ahead. Thank you. That's all I had to say.
No, I'm sorry, Tim. Um, I think it would be a good idea to do it that way, a contingency uh, on their final bids. Uh, they're using 95,000 or what it was for labor to install it. They only, no one wants to touch it out of the four bids they had, only one person. That's how they came up with that amount from one bid. So you're right, Tim, until they get in there and get it, you know, it's, could be hard. So I agree with what you're saying. We should take, put that contingent on additional cost. And if not, then it go back into the pot, right?
Or, or the pot, the ADA requirements.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Well, this is Rosalie. I have a question. Uh, with the kitchen, they would have to comply with the Fire Marshal's guidelines too.
Yes.
Because I know we had to deal with that and that's very expensive. They don't comply with that. Like you said, the fire, you know, the extinguishers with the hoods and.
The suppression system, right? That's, that's what I think might be under, they've underestimated.
Yeah, and it's very expensive. So could we do a contingency of uh, and, and see what happens?
Yeah, I think we can.
If they don't comply, then give it to the, to ADA.
Rosie, go ahead.
Yes. We can definitely, like, that's what contingencies are there for. However, we will need some solid numbers tonight. And then based on those numbers, obviously, before we go to council, we can at the next meeting, this has never happened, but I guess at the next public meeting that we have, the Block Run Advisory Committee meeting, we could finalize the numbers, but that would mean that Good Sam would have to get new bids in less than a month. And I don't know how realistic that is. Because all of this goes to, but we have to draft an action plan and it all has to go to council by April. And then any tweaks are then sent back to council in May. And then all of this has to go to HUD and the numbers kind of have to be what they are. So um, so, so I mean, if you want to get, if you want to give more to Good Sam, it's, I just, we just do, we do need to know how much more at this point. And then we can always revisit it, but it would have to be by the, by, by the next meeting in March. Because all of this goes to council in April.
Hang on one second. Uh, Tim had his hand up.
I'm sorry. Um, yeah, Isaac, with just one second, then I'll just, I'll be brief. What if, what if we put the full amount in the Good Sam? And then the, and then if they didn't, we've had, we've had agencies that didn't use the funds, all the funds in the past, and that went back into the uh, we real, reallocated it later in the year. Would that be acceptable?
Yes, we would just have to amend the action plan. But, I mean, during COVID, we did, I don't know how many amendments to our plan because everything changed so much. So it's not unheard of to do an amendment. I mean, it's a bit of, a bit of work on our part, but it's, I mean, it's, it's not like it's not doable.
Go ahead, Isaac.
Yeah, looking at the plan here, yeah, this is, is very, very close, which is pretty good, actually. Uh, yeah, I would say give it to the Good Samaritan, at least 300. And then they show the rest of between those other organizations. I know Patricia was asking to, for the Boys and Girls Club, but they're not in the layer, so it'll be a little more time consuming. I would say the rest of the money, just give it out to the 75, 125, or whatever the organizations are there. At least 300.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Patricia.
Oh, just, just to clarify, the Boys and Girls, Girls Club was something that we did last year. That was an example. Correct. Um, so my, um, my recommendation is to, to pull full amount into the Good Sam as Tim recommended. And um, yeah, and reassess, but I'm sure that they're gonna be able to, to, to use the full amount.
So I'll, I'll make a motion then that we allocate the remaining balance to the Good Samaritan Shelter Kitchen Upgrade um, with a contingency that if they cannot, that that, that that remaining 125 and change goes to the City of Santa Maria Public Works ADA Project. And that gives us a clean, that gives us a clean, uh, kind of a bill to send.
I second it.
That's a good idea.
I third it.
I fourth it.
Yeah, we all agree on that one.
Let's go with that.
We got to laugh on Zoom. Unbelievable.
And then, uh, is anyone opposed to that?
No, it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Alrighty, thank you.
Rosie, for now, should I just add it to Good Sam and then we'll add the.
That's what, that's what's been adopted. So what's been adopted is that the 125,093 go to Good Samaritan on top of the 258. And with the contingency that um, as soon as possible, we, we find out, you know, if they can use it or along the way. Uh, if they can use it, if they can't, that additional funding will go towards the ADA pedestrian improvement project, correct?
And I think we'd all be okay with giving them a timeline that if they can't do it by a certain time, that, a hard deadline that that it just rolls over to the city. That way it's not up in limbo and you guys aren't waiting for.
Would you like to adopt a certain time or would you like us to implement a certain time based on HUD guidance?
You know best, so I would leave it to you.
Okay, we'll, we'll discuss it with, I mean, I, 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 I'm also um, sensitive to the fact that right now getting bids is very difficult, so I.
I would think three months.
Okay.
That'd give them plenty of time to do their research, to find the equipment that they wanted, to find a supplier. Uh, and at least they could buy the equipment even if it's back ordered. A lot of our stuff right now is back ordered and we're waiting.
That's what I've heard.
Yeah, so, so it's, that, I, I would say three months would probably be reasonable, but I could be wrong.
Okay, all right. I, we will, we will iron out the details and, and report back as soon as possible to the committee.
Rosie, is this the way it's gonna be presented to the city?
Yes.
Okay. With the contingents and everything, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Then what else do we need to do, Rosie?
Okay, so moving back to that slide. Here is my PowerPoint. Moving back to that slide. So we have made our recommendations for CDBG Public Services, CDBG Capital, and the 5% delivery cost. I'm sorry, Alicia, can we go back to, can we go back to that, that previous slide? It is time to make to, um, to make a recommendation second and um, approve or deny uh, the 5% delivery cost. So what the 5% delivery cost is, is that the numbers you see on the column that, that were just, where the committee just made its recommendations, 5% will be taken away from that amount to cover whether it's environmental reports that need to be, be done. Uh, our staff time, any uh, public notices that need to be done because of the project, any expenses related to that project that are administrative in nature will come out of that 5% delivery cost. 95% of the time, we never use that full 5%, and then it goes back to the project so that the agency can utilize it. But it does allow us to cover the costs of managing these capital program, these capital projects.
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
Who, uh, who seconded? I'm sorry?
Me, Brian.
Thank you.
And then uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And is anyone opposed or does anyone abstain? Thank you.
Okay, so now we are moving on to our TBRA administration. And that is the $15,000 set aside from our capital funds to cover the administrative costs of managing our home funding, which are our home TBRA-funded project.
Was that already added to the figures?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, so we voted on that already. Do we have to vote again?
You're right.
Yeah.
Um, you know what, just, just for, just in case we need to for our home consortium, um, if we could have a separate vote.
Okay, I move.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone, is anyone opposed? Thank you, and any abstentions? Alright, thanks, everyone.
All right, and now we have our fair housing. Now the fair housing $10,000 comes out of our general administration. So the city is allowed to take 20% of the CDBG allocation it receives every year for administrative costs. And again, that's how we exist, is through um, all of these administrative uh, set asides. And we are obligated to put some of that money aside for fair housing. So we'd like the committee to vote on that tonight and to formally set aside $10,000 out of our general admin for fair housing activities.
Okay, I move.
I'll second. And is anyone opposed? And are there any abstentions? Thank you.
Okay, and the last one, adopt any contingencies. So we've adopted the contingency for the capital project. Um, but at this time, are there any other contingencies you'd like added to any of our public services or capital projects?
Um, let me, let me bring up the um, public service spreadsheet.
Go ahead.
So we'll do that first, and then after that, we'll adopt the contingencies um, related to whether we get more money or less money.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead, Tim.
Thank you. Ryan, what do you think? Um, we took the monkey survey, so do you think that it should just go in order? If we got more money?
Yes, yeah, exactly.
To the next, the next one's in, in order?
Yes, e- exactly. So my, my motion would be that if there is any additional funds allocated for public service, that they be distributed in order uh, per the survey based on team recommendations until the funds are exhausted.
And that is assuming that, okay, it's Ron Jacob. And, and that is assuming that we receive enough money to fully to, to provide each one with the full ask or the 15,000. Um, because, like, let's say we only get an extra 10,000. Or an extra 20,000. Yeah, I, I mean, which is fine, I mean, it just, how would you like it divvied up? Do you want, do you want to, do you want to fully fund them based on their requested amount or their team recommendation?
A team recommendation is what I suggested in the, my motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Looks like all the team recommendations are either met or we exceed them.
Yeah.
And then, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jose, you had your hand up.
Yeah, there is just a difference in, in Family Service, Service Agency, they're down by five as well as uh, the Salvation Army, they're down by about 800. So I was gonna say, um, hopefully with the agency to be able to fill those amounts. But that's on you guys.
I was looking at the wrong category.
Is there any way of making this decision once we receive word whether there is additional funds?
Unfortunately, I wish there was, but we're at the mercy of when HUD, we Husha, how do I say this? HUD, HUD doesn't really tell us when they're gonna tell us. Um, so sometimes they tell us in March, sometimes they tell us in August. Either way, we're still required to submit our plan the 45 days before the start of the fiscal year. So no matter what, we're still required to submit our plan mid-May. So unfortunately, it doesn't stop for us. So we basically end up sending projections. Um, and they, they, and, and then just once in a while, they'll tell us, okay, you can hold off. But the process still, there's, there's a lot that happens between now and then because of, of our citizen participation plan that we have in place. So um, unfortunately, no, there's no way of doing that before we adopt contingencies to kind of help.
So, so I'd like to propose this then, and that is in the event that there is additional funds, then we, for example, um, meet the, um, the ask of, say, the Family Resource Center as well as the Salvation Army Hot Lunch Program. And then if there are any additional funds left over at that point, then you distribute them equally amongst the, the 11 um, ones that we've approved.
I agree with that. Tim, did you have something else, Tim?
Uh, well, yeah, Ron kind of said, I liked Jose's idea. I was looking at the wrong category, and I think he hit it right on the nail. And I think Ron followed up on that. Um, and I, I like that. Thank you.
And then I, if I could add also that if there is less money, um, that we would just, if, if there's less money and not enough to fund any after we funded those, there's not enough to fully fund a remaining agency, that we just leave city council to make that decision because they will have selected at least, what, two, two more agencies to fund, potentially with their, with their aside. So I would, I think that would allow, like, be the best way to get rid of anything that's either not enough, if we don't get enough to fully fund these or to partially fund another one rather than do that, let, let city council make the decision on that.
Will we know that?
I would, I, yeah, thank you, Tim. I would suggest that the committee also adopt a contingency if we don't have enough to decide what to do with that, because if we go to council and we still haven't gotten our allocation, we still present the contingencies to the council so that the council's also, so that we also don't have to go back to council and redo the process again. So we adopt the contingencies and then we present those contingencies to council and then council will usually also go with whatever the committee's contingencies are. So that those, that contingency kind of carries through, because we may not know by the time we go to council how much money we're gonna get. Does that make sense?
Is there, is there a motion on the table? Or all those have been motioned because it is, and I'll second it.
There, there is, um, I think, are we clear on one, Rosie?
So the motion I have right now, and we can do two separate motions if that helps, uh, the motion I have right now was made by Ron Jacob. And that is that we full, we, if, if we get additional funding, we fully fund the Salvation Army and Family Service Agency to what they requested. And then if there's additional funding left over to start funding 12 down and provide them with the team recommended amount. That is what I have so far, and we can adopt that, and then we can also make another recommendation separate to, to that. Um, that kind of talks about what if we only get, let's say, 10,000, you know, how, how do we want to divvy up something small?
Okay, I think that's good.
We get less, what if we get less?
Right, that's a good start. So I think we should, we should move forward with that and vote on it.
Okay, second on Ron's motion.
And then all in favor?
Aye.
And is anyone opposed? And is there anybody abstaining? All right, thank you. And now the next uh will be if it's not enough, Rosie?
Well, the next one would be if if we only get a small, a small increase, obviously, we wouldn't be able to fully fund, let's say, number twelve. Um I would, I mean, based it, based, based on what has been recommended, would the committee want to fully fund uh the Salvation Army and Family Service Agency and then the rest just kind of be distributed evenly across the board?
Yes, that sounds good to me. Tim, you have your hand up. Did you?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll lower it. I like that idea. Sorry.
Okay, I I mean, if somebody wants to make the recommendation, I was just putting.
I move.
And I'll second it.
Move.
And I'll, I'll second it, thanks. And then uh all in favor?
Aye.
And is anyone opposed or any abstentions? Thanks, everyone.
Okay, so the third one, sorry for the, for for public services is what if we get less?
So I would make the motion that we fund the um agencies, if we get less, that we fund the agencies that have applied to the team recommendation up until it, it funds are exhausted.
And what if we still need to cut?
Yeah.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just I, I.
Well, it would only be.
I mean, like I said, I really, I really don't see how that could be, but you just never know.
Well, it would be the, just how, whatever, one through however many of the um the surveys we can fund.
Unfortunately.
Yep.
Okay.
Up to the team recommendation amount.
Second up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Thank you.
All right, so uh funding contingencies for capital.
So I, for funding contingency for capital, if we get more than the projected allocation, my recommendation would be to distribute any additional funds to the city's ADA project, because we all know that's gonna run, it's, it's gonna be an expensive project. And that'll, they're probably, I mean, that they're the most equipped to to use it.
Brian, we would it, would it be um, they only asked for seventy-five, but community, communify, um you know, they do home repairs for for the seniors and for ADA, um they they actually go in people's houses. Should we should we bump that up? You know, we're giving, we're giving capsule one twenty-five. They only asked for seventy-five. Should we, should we bump them up a bit, like to a hundred or something, uh because of, you know, they're actually going in people's homes and helping out the community. I mean, I know the ADA stuff does too, believe me, uh but it's, it's thought, just a thought.
I'm fine with it if the agency can use it and if the committee agrees.
Yeah, I don't know.
Are are we kind of in a situation, though, where we have to, I mean, because we're gonna look at the kitchen equipment upgrade? That's gonna come into play possibly, is it not?
Um well, we've allocated the money for that, Ron. If we're, I think what they question in here now is if we get more than what we've allocated. Is that correct?
Okay, understood.
So uh.
And I, I second Tim's motion then.
All right, that'll work. Uh all in favor?
Aye.
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 Is anyone opposed? And is any abstentions? Thank you. And then I guess the next one will be if we get uh less, in which case um I don't know. Anybody have any ideas?
We, we bumped up the kitchen. I mean, we could take the kitchen down to the, to the team recommendation.
Original amount, yeah.
Yeah, so so Rosie, I guess, is, would it be enough for us to make a recommendation that if we do get less, that we back the team recommendation or back the uh recommended amounts down to the original team recommendations for the funded agencies? Is that gonna be adequate?
Without permanent part.
Correct.
Uh sure, so the only one that it would, it would knock down would be communify and um and Good Sam. Because all the other team recommendations are
Yeah.
are in line. And is there a particular order? Is there a particular order you would like that to happen?
I think we should, um I think we should fund Good Samaritan to their team recommendation first and then and then consider anything else. If it's less, consider anything above that excess and then fully fund uh communify. If that makes sense.
I think it did.
Yep, second up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Any, any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Yeah, that was good.
Who, who, I'm sorry, who seconded this? I know, uh Ryan, you made the motion, but who seconded?
Uh.
Isaac.
Isaac did.
Isaac, thank you, Isaac. Okay. All right. Now that we've, are are there any other programmatic, not financial contingencies you'd like to adopt that we haven't adopted already? No? Okay, so moving on, we do have a public comment period. This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on matters not otherwise scheduled on this agenda, so not related to the um deliberations tonight and the CDBG allocations. Is there anybody who would like to uh speak? Okay, well, just a reminder. All of these recommendations will be presented to the city council in a public hearing fashion on Tuesday, April fifth, starting at five thirty. And at that time, the public is invited to attend and participate and um share their thoughts on these recommendations with the city council.
So before I adjourn, I just want to thank um city staff this year for all your hard work. Um it's been tough with everything, but again, you've adapted and and put together a great uh just made a good system for us to to work with. And then I want to thank my fellow committee members for all of your hard work uh during this cycle. It's been tough. It's always tough on the deliberations, but we have a lot of new members and you know, that's a lot to take in. And I appreciate all of you and the time that you've committed to um being here. And then uh also, I want to thank our applicants, even the ones who we couldn't fund. Uh we appreciate all the work that they do for the community. And it, you know, it hurts us when we can't fund everybody, but I think they understand that and you know, we, we really appreciate them and all the time they devote to this process. And then uh Rosie, if you could also um extend my thanks to Mark Vander Kamp for his help with the Survey Monkey tonight, because I know you know, it's a little extra for him and and we appreciate him taking extra time to to help us out with that. Um I I definitely appreciated it. It streamlines our process a bit, at least I feel like it does. And so uh I know it's not easy to to administer those sometimes, especially given the nature of our meeting tonight. Um but I wanted to send it thanks to Mark and then um that's all I have. Tim, you have your hand up if you had something to add.
Do, Ryan, I just want to thank you personally for your leadership through this. Um I'm not a, Zoom is very difficult on the meetings and I really miss seeing everybody and meeting all the new members. We're just such a diverse group and we have all different opinions, but we get together in a room and we can laugh and have fun and make tough decisions. And this Zoom is very difficult for their, you know, just let the new members know. And I think you did a heck of a job here tonight, and I wanted to thank everybody. And I just hope we can all get in a room together and see each other, meet each other and see who we are and have fun and laugh together and and do some hard work. So, Ryan, thank you very much. Uh you made this a very pleasant experience.
Thanks, Tim, I appreciate it. Uh and with that, uh oh, I'd go ahead, Isaac.
I just definitely take it to Rosie and her group. It was a very, very good job. For me, being the first time, I'm very amazed, amazed the, all the paperwork they go through and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh so with that, I think it's, what time is it? I got uh seven thirteen. I will adjourn the meeting and I'll see you all next time. Thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks to all.
Bye. Night. Night, Angie. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.